Down at the bottom, under Metropolitan Sewer Service. The, kind of in the middle, it starts, "The sewered housing forecasts were estimated based on sewer access charges, SAC, et cetera, et cetera, relating to your community." I found the personal pronoun to be not necessary in there, maybe "the" community, or...
Yeah, I like that.
That's a relic from our last plan, by the way.
Yeah, yes.
Can, before you go, can I ask Stefan, on this park, just so I know. What do, so in here, I just know it says Baker Park Reserve, reserve, in our, this is in the Regional Park System Plan considerations. But I know that that park is referenced a lot as the Morris T. Baker, Baker Park, what do you guys call it?
I think- We just call, we dropped the, the Morris T., we just call it Baker Park Reserve.
Baker Park Reserve, that's-
And that's what's on their website, too.
It is. I just was noticing on this map, though, that's generated by the Met Council, that the one that has the-
Yeah, I mean, that was the official name.
Yeah, and I know that used to be in all the plans, was the-
Yeah, there was a, there was an effort many years ago to kind of rebrand some things, and legally, it's probably still the name, Morris T. But we've just sort of rebranded it to make it more user-friendly.
I need to go back and look, because I know in another plan that I submitted to the Met Council, they came back on the park preserve names, and none of the ones we had in our plan were what they wanted it to be, but they were the ones that everybody thought they were called. So I need to, I need to look at what, 'cause Baker Park was on that, on that, so.
And what, what did they want to call it?
I'd have to look it up. I can tell you pretty quick, but I can't remember. Now, I'm trying to think if it was the, that's why I'm asking you, Baker Park Reserve versus the Morris T. Baker Park Preserve, or whatever, Park Reserve, or whatever they called it. Okay.
Well, I'm doing a master plan for the park right now, and I'm calling it Baker.
I know, that's why, that's why I'm asking you the question. I want to know what it is.
That's what it's going to be, that's what it's going to be.
'Cause they commented on like, yeah, I had one in the loose line trail, and it, I said, I think we said the loose line trail, and they said it's the-
State Trail, or the Regional Trail?
It's regional. They wanted it to say Regional Trail, not just loose line trail, and I'm like, alright, we'll get that.
Because it is different. If you, from Vicksburg gone west, it's a state trail.
Is that?
Oh.
And then east of Vicksburg, it's, it's, it's Free Rivers Park District Regional Trail.
So it is, so, okay, so maybe there's a method to that, and I didn't know, there you go. I should have called you on the park one. Alright.
Anything on 110 for anybody? Then on two point, two dash one, down towards the bottom. There's a sentence that says, "The cumulative result of the community accepted, et cetera, et cetera," goes, "For each community designation R achieved," I don't know what "E achieved" means.
For each community designation, I think it should just say, "Achieved."
Well, well, is, well-
Cumulative result of the community-accepted distribution of future growth is an annual incentive minimum benchmarks for each community designation R achieved.
R achieved.
R, 'cause it's a plural thing, okay. Alright. Okay, people, if anybody has two dash two going on. Two dash three, two dash four, and five, I'm making an assumption where it says figure two one, that it's going to go on there at some point, that, that sounds good.
Yeah.
Yeah, we got a lot of, a lot of stuff like that going on.
Yeah, knowing that's correct.
Well, and the figures, most of these figures are either in the plan, or they're already, they're just old figures that we're reusing that haven't changed.
Okay, and then we have, on page two dash six. We have low-density residential, single-family detached, which is repeated four down, and says the same thing. So I think one of them can go away.
Yeah, for sure. Well, yeah, what would that be? Yeah, sure.
Okay, two seven, two eight. And then two nine, on two nine, each time that it made reference to figure two dash five, and then two dash six, I have no idea where they are.
Yeah.
It doesn't have blank pages or anything, either. I did find, I finally found two dash five.
It's there, but, yeah, okay.
Yeah, there's work there.
It's just making sure that they pop up. Let's see, we've got two nine, two, ten, to eleven, to two thirteen, again, those are blank. And, um-
Yep.
Yeah, so, figure two dash six, I, I don't know where that is.
That's, two dash six is the land use plan, that cutoff, it looks like, in the print packet, but-
Okay, 'cause there's a little thing here that says two dash five, I can see that, but I don't see two dash six.
Oh, I, yeah.
One of your notes says that it's the old two, two six was, or two five was the old two six.
Yeah.
Okay.
We will double-check ours.
Well, it's not even double-check, we will fix the number. Yeah, we didn't, like I said, I didn't get all of the numbering updated.
No, that's alright.
Back on that graphic, I guess, following up with what you talked about before, on the land use.
Yeah.
Those land use, in the division, like, between single-family, there, between Independence and Main Street, you drew the line, kind of even with boundary.
Yeah.
Was that, was there a method to your reasoning there, as far as, as far as east-west transition there between single-family and mixed-use gateway that would be your-
Oh, it was the church.
It was the church?
Yeah.
But Christ Lutheran? Yeah.
Yeah.
He's talking about.
Yep.
Okay.
Oh, why am I missing a thing, slide, I forgot, touch me, there we go. Yeah, that's the church.
Church, yeah.
Does it make, does it make more sense to, to leave the church in the mixed-use?
Yes.
We think so.
Yeah, okay.
I would, yeah.
Yeah, that's the, that's the church right here.
And they also have those bigger lot, you know, bigger lots.
Well, and there have been, not, not that I'm thinking that that's happening here, but there's some places that I've been going here in the cities, and there's one stretch where there are two or three churches that, one of them is like gone-gone. I mean, it's the, a big empty building now. And then others that you know, one church left and another church came in, and so, I mean, I'm not saying that that would happen, but it makes more sense to leave that mixed-use.
I think so, too, 'cause if it was going to change or redevelop it.
Yeah.
It's at least got the parcel and the size.
Yeah, and you'd be able to start off right away. Um, let's see, two, um, thirteen, two fourteen, anybody? Two fifteen, sixteen. One of, one of the questions that I had on two seventeen, and it's referenced in a couple of places, is where it talks about the downtown area having, you know, the library, and City Hall, and blah, 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 altogether, kind of thing, which we had talked about some years, and I think probably predates, for sure you Nicole, but maybe you two, well, anyway, I was a little surprised to see that, has Hennepin County Library said that they would be willing, because they said before, "Forget it, we're not doing anything with y'all," you know, thumb your nose, that kind of thing, and, and maybe they changed. But I get worried when I see things like that, that someone actually thinks that those things are going to go together, including City Hall.
The, so, Caitlin, you're on the-
Yes, I'm both on the library board, and I've talked with Bobby about this. So he did get, the library did come to the point where they said, "Yeah, we'd be willing to move in the right situation." The problem is, the guy who said that has also left the library. So, we, in one sense, yes, we've been told, yes, in the right, you know, if we get the right plan and the right compromise, yes, we'd be willing to move. 'Cause there are some, there would be additional benefits to them if they moved that we're trying to work with, so there is good potential. I won't say it's for sure.
Okay, well, and-
But they, we have gotten a yes.
Okay, and I, I'm not, I think it, I, I thought it would be great-
But it's a good point to bring up, yeah.
I thought it would be great then, and then when it was like, you know, oh, well, it was, well, and it was pretty much that way then.
Yeah.
I, I just, it's like one of those things, you kind of go-
Yes, exactly. That's why we won't say it's for sure, you know, but yes.
Can we go back to fourteen?
Sure.
Are we, under the commercial and industrial there in the middle of the chart? Am I reading that right, that we're losing that much?
Yeah, because some of our land that's commercial-industrial is getting re-guided, and will be redeveloped. So some of the land that's classified right now as commercial and industrial, say along Highway twelve, that's in a mixed-use district that gets redeveloped to something else, is going to come out of commercial-industrial. If that makes sense. So we would be losing potentially existing land uses that are commercial or industrial, and gaining then mixed-use residential or mixed-use downtown.
It's not like the land's going away, it's just going into a different designation.
Right. That's good, it's a good-
See the pluses there?
Point, yeah.
Right, and then on page two eighteen, two dash eighteen. Land use institutional. This is just me, I always think people put these things in for my amusement. Why are, why is cemeteries in here with city offices or facilities?
They are often a, well, they're not often, they are considered an institutional use.
Okay, and the likelihood that we're going to have a cemetery in this town is what?
But you already have the Indian grounds.
Indian burial grounds.
Indian burial ground.
Well, I don't think of them as, oh, okay, I, I-
I don't know, yeah, we can take it out, I don't, yeah.
But I don't see that in the cemetery.
Do any churches have any-
No, but it comes under public semi-
There's not one in?
No.
I'm trying to think real quick.
No.
Nothing.
Nanawhat?
No, and, and again, it's just me.
The one on Main Street and Independence.
It's, I like things like this for amusing, you know, and then in park, where you're talking about four dash six, figure four dash six, I don't know where it is. So it's, it, you might want to look for that.
That is, that's a great catch.
And, and-
Locations of future parks. Do we even show?
No, we don't have any locations, Patrick.
And part of it was that you didn't think, in some of the verbiage, that we didn't really need, like, more parks, because we actually do have good things, but we might need, like, green spaces in some of these things, that you're not, right?
Like public, public spaces, yeah.
Yeah, that you're not designating as parks, so, you know, if you-
I don't see like, we don't see like another formal Rainbow Park, or Northside Park.
Right, yeah.
Right.
So you probably wouldn't have to, and if we got one, yay, but I, you know. Okay, then, um-
Yeah, we'd be, you know, we're kind of talking about more public spaces, and plaza-type areas instead of parks.
Yeah, other, other verbiage might, too.
Mm-hmm.
And then on four, or two dash nineteen. There in the third paragraph down, it talks about figure two dash six, I, I didn't see where that was. And this is going on to the next paragraph, this is an editorial comment.
Two six, yeah.
So I'll be real honest about that. It talks about the land use guide plan should be used in conjunction with policies, et cetera, et cetera, from this chapter, transportation, water resources, and park plans, and good judgment. And when I see something like that, I want to know who's good judgment.
Yeah.
I, 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 I understand the, I, the-
I don't like that term either, honestly, so.
I understand the intent, but it's like saying common sense. It kind of doesn't exist.
Yeah.
I, I think that's a good comment. I don't like that either.
And, and I, it's just one person's opinion. And then, I'm glad-
It's like a country colloquialism, I, I mean, it's just a-
And I, yeah, and I understand, but it, it's also one of those things where, if someone took that literally, and then they decided that they were the common sense. You know?
I think it's a good, it's a good comment.
And then, I, I did like when you were, that you mentioned with the count, that the beds, or the, the independent living would count towards the density, I had that down. And then, okay, so then two twenty. Two, two, two dash two one. Okay. Two dash two two, that first sentence, "Like the Gateway District, the Bud," again, Avenue slash Highway twelve District, is envisioned to, is it supposed to say BN, or is there a new word now called ban? It's not the right use for ban.
I don't know, let's pick, let's-
To be an area.
I think it's B-A-N.
Envisioned to be AN.
Yeah, B-A-N.
Yeah, which, I don't know if I like that either, but is envisioned to-
Well, we'll think about how to reword that.
It's just that-
Back, back on twenty one, um-
Yeah, we can fix that, yeah.
Paragraph talks about the downtown district will be establishing of a new institutional center, including City Hall, Post Office, and so forth. Is that still something we want to consider, or is this our new home that's, that we're going to be at for the next ten, twenty years?
No, the council's talked about moving, the council's talked to the downtown redevelopment group about leasing space in that building. There's no decision made on it, but they said that, there's a general head nod that said, "Let's look at it, we're willing to look at moving there." The lease for this facility ends next year, so then, it's not that you can't renew it, we don't, the city doesn't know that yet, if they can or can't, but-
Well, then you better have something built.
I think it's at least twenty years.
We'll put up a nice tent.
Maybe some trailers or something. Trailer trash.
Here we go.
Well, I, I, I think that would be, I mean, I, this is a nice place, too, but I think having it in the-
They talked about the-
In the center is, just makes sense.
Having a civic use in your downtown is important, and so-
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that was still in the works, because this was, you know, so well-liked, that we're looking at potentially, you know, purchasing this part of the building or something, but-
Yes.
No.
Yeah, and who knows, I mean, Orno is, just shut their open enrollment, so you never know, I mean, right? They might need the space back if they keep growing.
They've bought it back once before.
Yeah?
They did sell it, and then had to buy it back.
Right, so, yeah, with their growth, all these houses we're putting in.
Yeah.
Yeah, hundreds of jobs.
Two twenty, um, let's see, we, we did two twenty-two.
Twenty-three.
Twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight. On two twenty-eight, under solar access. It says Minnesota statutes section, that implies singular, so it would be requires, but if you're saying sections, meaning that there are multiple sections about solar access.
It's probably, there's probably a statutory section that you were going to, or that we were going to reference in there.
Yeah, I'll, I'll-
And, yeah, not at, again, you know, low on the total.
No, it's, yeah, it's great.
Two dash twenty-nine, two thirty, two thirty-one.
Yeah.
Two thirty-two.
Might circle this up, 'cause you-
Just circle that.
Let's see, two thirty-three, and four, and then some blank pages.
Yeah, I just-
I always like that. Government documents often have this page left intentionally blank.
Yeah.
I don't know why the next one is, though, but-
Yeah, and I, I always find that interesting. Then we have on X two, we go into X two. Socio, socio-economic forecasts.
Where did they go, when I, did they like dial out? Yeah, okay, go ahead, socio-economic?
Okay, right, and if, in that first paragraph under it, as it goes, and it's, it's highlighted, so I know that-
Table, X, yeah.
Table, I don't know where it is, or what it, what it was.
I think we were trying to-
This is a reference back to land use, and so, we used to have this table twice in this document, but we want to reference the table that is, yeah. So that's what it is, and so-
That makes sense.
Yeah.
Did we reference anywhere in here about the desire to take over Main Street from the county? Should that be in here, or is it in here?
We do talk about that in-
Yeah, it is in here, yeah.
It is, okay.
It is. That it, that it's a possible type of thing. Let's see, two, no, X dash three.
Yep.
Under projected traffic volumes, towards the end of that paragraph, it talks about a figure three, no idea where that is.
Figure three two?
Uh, yes, three dash two.
Might be in there.
Well, I think, I think the traffic figures, you know, for some reason, when the pa, when the page kind of got, when you get these X, you know, it must be X, what's those?
Well, there are threes, there are figure threes whatevers, but not these, not three point two, three dash two.
Okay.
Let's see.
They're not in there.
So I have three two as being this traffic volume, is that, is it like kind of being not printed out right on?
Well, let's go, I'll, I'll go through it on mine, and see if I can find it.
Okay, and then we have, let's see, X four, X five, X six, seven, eight, nine, wonderful with little cars. X ten. On the X eleven.
Okay.
On the X eleven. Right above the table, it says, "Can be found in the tables below," and there's table three dash three, is there supposed to be another table?
No, 'cause the next one is three four, but I wonder if it's referencing both, because they're both-
One is MnDOT guidelines, one is Hennepin County, so it's-
It's all of those tables as they go down?
The table-
Well, maybe then, say, three dash, tables three dash three and three dash four.
Okay, I think it's actually more, but, yeah, okay, so just say tables three.
Yeah, or how, whatever they are, just because-
Three.
Otherwise, you'd think they should be right next to it, 'cause there's words that go in front of them.
Three, six. Yeah. It's three, 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 six. Yeah, okay.
X twelve, and thirteen. On X fourteen, under Maple Plain Access Spacing Guidelines. In the middle, it says, "The basic references for the spacing guidelines," is that document previously referenced? Can you maybe name it? I mean, what, what is it that you're referencing?
Got that.
Clarify, yeah.
And then on that same page, and this is from somebody who, these kinds of things don't come naturally. You're, you, in table three six, you, you have city access spacing guidelines, and you've got all these columns for, yeah. And they talk about miles per hour, and then full median opening miles and miles, and then it says spacing between, and you look at this, is this feet between? Is this, I know it's not miles between, does it make any difference, is it just Michelle who's an idiot?
No, I think we should put the distance on there, just like we have on miles per hour, and miles, and miles, and-
Yeah.
Should it say feet? Is it feet, or what is, what is like eight twenty?
Yeah, it should say feet in print, yeah, it's feet.
Okay. Okay.
Yeah.
That's just for people like me who kind of go, woo. Let's see, X dash fifteen. Oh, on X sixteen, metro, right at the top, Metro Transit on Route six seventy-four, I don't think I'd put S. It's just a route. And, um-
Which one, where is that?
Metro Transit on Route, on X fifteen or X sixteen?
Right at the top.
Sixteen.
Sixteen.
X sixteen, yeah.
Says Metro Tran, Transit or, um-
All routes.
Yeah.
Yeah, routes.
Yeah, it would be wonderful if we had more, but I know we don't.
Yeah, and then it says these routes are only available.
Yeah. Um, down at the-
So just say this route.
At the bottom, where it says freight, there is, should say there is, one commercial rail line. And maybe lying, kind of thing. X seventeen. The second paragraph, heavy commercial trucking tra, vehicle traffic is shown on figure three two, I don't know where that is.
Oh, we found that now, didn't we?
We did find it, it's that figure, but-
Excellent, excellent!
It's in there, it's just towards the end, yeah.
Put it in there!
It just isn't in the right order, right? It's like, you said it's the end of-
It's at the end, yeah, instead of where it's supposed to pop into, but it does, it's on, it's in the packet.
Good. Then on aviation. If, that second paragraph, last sentence. If a structure over two hundred feet is proposed, the city of Maple Plain will notify both organizations? Instead of with, will?
Yeah.
If a structure over two hundred feet is proposed, Maple Plain will notify both organizations, which would be federal aviation and-
How come spell check didn't catch that?
Again, because with is a word.
It is a word.
Supposed to be smarter, it's supposed to be smarter than that.
This is the wrong place, but-
You know, Dan, it doesn't go, "Were you really thinking this?"
Will, wait, yeah. Sometimes I think it does catch something.
Turn, turn on the grammar part of it.
Some grammatical stuff.
Yeah, turn on the grammar part.
But sometimes I turn that off, 'cause I know more than the computer does, from most of the-
Yeah, on, go ahead.
So, so it looks, it looks like you added all the, um, ideas that were brought forward at the open house about the rerouting of the intersections, Highway twelve at Bud and, and Main Street, right, and is that what, figure three seven is all about?
Correct, yeah.
Yeah.
Or three, three eight, maybe, that's, is that what you're talking, three seven is this transit?
On, on, eighteen.
So this is, this is the figure, which is three eight? So this is the one that-
This is the intersection.
Oh, three seven is the intersection plan, which is?
Go, no, go back to the one that had the Xs, 'cause I think, Stefan, do you see the, do you see the red Xs?
Yeah.
Okay, tho, that's what they're talking about, close that, close, there's Xs over here on Bud, yeah.
Oh, yeah, it should say, it should say figure three eight, though.
So that gets at your point of, I think Stefan talked-
Was three seven, though, the actual roundabout, or I mean, the sing, signalized intersection plan? We didn't have that.
We, we inserted, we, we had to talk about this existing transit, so figure three seven is a transit, I think at one time, we might have called the highway three, three eight, so when we, when we renumbered these figures and added three eight, we never got the, that updated, um, on page X dash eighteen, where it says, "To help further future planning," figure three dash seven, it should say three dash eight.
At each time that this is referenced, I liked that it talked about having conversations or discussions with MnDOT, the city, and a lot, blah, 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 blah. That it keeps saying that, 'cause I, I know, I know, having worked with them, I know that they're good people at the DOT, but they truly, if somebody does not say something to them, they will go with whatever is in their hands, so I like that, that we keep saying, "We're going to be a part of this."
Did you need this changed from the open house?
No, this should be that same drawing that we have. It's easier to see on the twenty-two by thirty-four inch board, you know.
Yeah, I mean, it's, I don't know why, it's just, I mean, it looks great on my screen.
I think it's just the light, if that, to control those, can you shut off those lights? You can't, can you?
It must be a projector setting, I don't know.
You can maybe change it to one bulb instead of two, but, it's probably three bulbs in there.
But no, this is what we had recommended at the, or had shown at the open house, and this is what we're proposing, the Plan B, and and you'll know, this is one of our big changes from our last plan, is, the last plan had three options, option one, two, and three for transportation, and it was kind of like any, we're, we're wanting the plan to say, "This is the city's plan."
Good.
And we have gotten comments back from Hennepin County, they're supportive of this plan, we asked MnDOT for comments, we're not going to get them until we submit this officially, but we asked them for them before, and it is what it is, we're gonna, we're gonna go with this plan, and say this is what we want it to be for the city. At least this way, we, we pared it down, so there isn't an unknown, and if this plan gets adopted, then the city's, you know, from- At least this way we, we pared it down, so there isn't an unknown, and if this plan gets adopted, then the city's, you know, from staff level and everybody else, we've got a.
Yeah.
One plan.
One plan, everybody's in agreement, this is what it should be.
Good.
What happens to the hawk?
It goes away.
We think it's gonna go away. Sell it on Craigslist or?
We're gonna sell it to Baker Park, we sure.
We talked to the county, um, we told, we told, uh.
Put that in your plan.
No, we told, uh, we told Bob, uh.
Buyer.
Buyers that he's going to, we're gonna give it to, uh, the county and they can put it in on, uh, Main Street and, uh, Baker Park Road.
Yep.
Yeah.
To get to the park, and he goes.
The passing, yeah.
I don't know if I want that. Oh, it's gonna be great, it's gonna be great. He didn't say no though, he didn't say no.
Wait, well, you know. To the, to the point of the Elam place, I mean, people are concerned about traffic there and, you know, and we don't know how that's going to all work out.
Yeah.
So maybe, you know.
Well, 'cause that Elam is gonna have a trail that goes all the way north to Main Street, and that's where we're talking is that you'd have a designated pedestrian, 'cause that goes into the, the parking, you know, the trail system right there.
That could be a place. Yes. I like it. I like it.
And how else are we getting people into the park?
Yeah, well, that's good.
So having a designated, I, I mean, a hawk on that would be fantastic. Makes sense to me. Yeah.
I like that.
So you aren't gonna put that in your capo from a plan, purchase?
Yeah. Hey, I already, I already suggested it to them, so.
You did, you did put it, right, I'm gonna put it in my written comments back to the. Now that you say that, I'm gonna mention it.
I talked to your staff about that, you know, having a better, that was one of our concerns.
I like that.
Is having a better crossing over there.
Well, and I bet you.
No, and actually the Baker Master Plan has, has a note there too about improving the crossing and some other improvements on the park side.
The crossing. Yeah.
To accommodate the future trail.
I bet the city would give them a good deal.
I think we would.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
I like it. Let's see.
I would hope a very good deal.
The park district, well, the, the, park district did pay for, uh, underpass.
Yeah.
Yes, they did, no, you're bet- oh, that's true.
That was the greatest thing I've seen, the park district do for, that's great, I mean, you do great things, but that was awesome.
That might be seen as quid pro quo, we don't wanna quick with all that. Um, let's see, on page X dash eighteen, um, I, I don't know if it, if this is the official title for it, where it says US twelve road safety audit technical report? If that's the official title as such, but is that something that should be, you know, U period S period Highway twelve?
I can double check that.
I'll default to Dan on that one.
If it's, yeah, if it's the official title of the thing.
There is an official title on the thing, but if, it, it might have periods in it, so we'll.
Then leave it.
Get that figured out.
Okay, then we've got a couple of blank pages, yay. Keep going, um, and I wanna find that one for me, that, and. Um, let's see, going to four dash three. Under Northside Park. Northside Park, figure four dash five, I don't know where that is. And on the next page, it references figure four dash six, I don't know where that is. And then, um, on four dash five, uh, figure four dash seven under Bryantwood Park, I don't know where that one is either. And then this is a curiosity thing from my standpoint, and it might be something that I've completely missed. We're talking under Pioneer Park about, um, it had been home to one of the BMX periods and then, or BMX things, and I know that we moved it to Northside and then it went away. Why is it even there? 'Cause I, as far as I understood it was.
It's, that piece has been updated, right?
That it's gone, it's just gone, gone?
Yeah.
Um, a couple.
Some of this has been updated in the park section, right?
Yes, um, some of my edits did not make this packet, so.
Okay.
Um, that is one of those.
Okay, and then on the, in the same light, on, on this, um, what is this, um, amenities summary, blah, 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 blah.
Yes. Yep. Yep, that's also.
That's gone too, BMX is gone from there?
Yes, correct, yep, a lot of my edits did not make this packet.
Excellent. Okay, and then on four dash six, um, in the middle, um, under new parks, um, it, overtime, and then it says one issue that is certain to arise. That whole sentence, I'm guessing, is gone, 'cause it refers to BMX as well.
Yes, correct.
Excellent. And then.
Here it is.
Under existing and proposed bikeways and trails, um, it makes references here to figures four dash ten, eleven, and twelve, don't know where those are.
Your Mark's got my updated version up on the screen here, so we're gonna confirm that everything's.
Yeah, trails and sidewalks. But we still have the figures four, ten, eleven, and twelve in there, so we'll.
Yeah, check where that, where they are, and then on four seven, in that top paragraph, it talks about four dash nine, and I'm not sure where that is either.
Okay.
You know, we're gonna have a, a s- a single, um.
Park plan?
Yeah, trails map this time.
Oh, good.
So it's gonna be three figures.
And I ha- I can show you that.
And it's the kind of a.
It's the one you've seen from the open house, but.
Minus some few changes that we've taken from the, um, open house.
So this is gonna, I'll go to the council later this month, will we get a chance to see the updated? Yeah, we'll send that back out.
Oh, yeah.
So I know, I, personally, I didn't have enough time to review everything here.
Oh, yeah.
Well, and, and we anticipated, this is a huge document, that's why I was saying, feed us comments if you have more as they co- you know, as you get a chance to go through, because we wanna get them incorporated. The meeting for the council is the twenty-sixth, so, um, that's our anticipated date to adopt, but.
Six, yeah.
Can you send something, send, send out a link to a PDF or something?
Absolutely.
Yeah, if you're okay with that, or if you wanna print it, let us know.
If you would like a print copy, just, um, I can have those delivered when we have it ready, otherwise I will send an email with the, uh, link to the PDF online.
Okay.
I'm fine with the PDF.
Okay.
Others may not.
If anyone wants paper copy, just, uh, tell me, uh, sometime before, you know, next week or so.
Then on, let's see, we're. On four dash eight, um, in, in this, right at the top, it was talking about, um, a walkway, um, to connect Baker to Howard. Are we gonna talk about the Gateway Boulevard thing that's gonna happen 'cause of Elam?
Yeah.
I mean, would that be a way to say projected or kinda to?
Do you have that?
Toot your horn?
Well, this is here, it's right here, can you?
I'll make sure to make a note of it.
Yeah, 'cause I think it, it, you know, I, I always think it's good to be able to say we are, we're, we're doing what we talk about.
Sure, sure, I'll make, I'll make a note tonight, so I have to make sure to incorporate that in.
And does, does the new underpass, uh, should that make it too?
Yeah, that should make it in there.
Okay, I will make a note of that too.
Yeah, that is a good point.
Um.
With this new design that we've seen tonight, uh, at one point there was talk of a trail along the north side of Northside Park that connec- connected kind of from Drake and Howard across over to, uh, over to Bud.
Do we put that back on?
It's in there, yeah. Are you doing that park plan to show tonight?
No, I know, but is it in the, yeah, I'm, I'm gonna, I'm gonna open up quick the, the park, um, this one?
It's in there, Dan put it in there.
Yeah, no.
No, he, Dan sent me an updated version.
So I don't have that in here?
Yeah, Dan, yeah, you sent me the one with. He updated it to add the, um, uh, Baker Park Regional Trail, I don't know what I'm calling the regional trail.
Yeah, Baker Carver.
Baker Carver Trail.
Baker dash Carver Regional Trail, it's not a good name, but.
Okay, so he.
So that, so that, that trail that you're talking about.
It does not flow off the tongue real easily.
That trail is, is shown over on our maps tonight that we were doing with the park plan, but, um.
It is on there.
It is over here, it's gonna get, it is in the map.
Mm-hmm.
I don't have that.
You don't have the correct one.
Okay, it's not in, not in your new park plan, and it looks like it would kinda. It is in the new park plan.
It's on the trail one that's up there.
This, this board, uh.
Um, Dan had the correct version, sent me, Mark didn't get this version for some reason, 'cause I know you saw it.
This one though? Okay.
We show this trail coming.
Cool.
Oh, I, I see, okay, it connects through, right, it goes into the.
The picnic shelter area.
Yeah.
I like that.
He probably wants to go around picnic shelter, not into it, but.
Upschool course.
Plow right into some picking tables.
Oh, no.
We're talking about this here. Okay, I want to make sure.
Helmet's required.
And it is on the, it is on the updated figure, I just pulled up.
Okay. And then, uh, but you, you are still showing the boardwalk?
Yes.
Million dollar.
Yes, that's in here, yes, yes.
Five million dollar boardwalk.
Yes.
Here's our thought, why, why, why?
Why not?
Take it out?
Oh, yeah.
Why not?
Well, if it's totally.
No, don't, save it in there.
We are, we are, that's what.
You don't think we'll ever get a, uh, seventy million dollar grant to build that? No, and then.
We just didn't find any reason, why not?
I don't. Well, my, my thought was, I think I mentioned it, mentioned this at the open house, is do something along, um, twelve, north side of twelve that sort of skirts the south side of the wetland and gets over to, uh, Independence City Hall area. Avoid expensive boardwalk, but still make the, still make the connection through town over to, is it, uh, is it Pioneer Park over there? Yeah.
Yes.
We have two Pioneer Parks in the area. Real original naming. Yeah. I, you know, it's a, it's a good, it's a good thought, we, when we redid the Highway twelve map, we show, you know, a trail along Highway twelve on the south side, which would extend out, um.
It's showing here, I think, red.
To where? I mean, it extended the border of the city.
Yeah.
Kind of the other thing too is, um.
Could you get it all the way around on the south side to ninety?
No, no, 'cause there's businesses, and there's, until the.
There's a big wetland there.
This is a personal thing, the idea of, of having pedestrians and bikers and kids along, anywhere along Highway twelve that would be that close to cars and trucks, um.
I think, what's it got?
That could get creamed by some fool, i- it is just too scary.
Well, it'd be great, I mean, it would be separated though. Yeah, it would be separated from the road, and it could be curved there, um, and I think as you get further from Hol- Holgren, that you could, you could, um, kind of traverse, traverse down to the edge of the wetland.
The cars and trucks. Cars and trucks. Yeah, but you've, you've still got, you've got that boat place, you have, um, a little bit of wetland, you've got all the businesses when, once you get past the wetland.
Could you, could you get it, you could get it to, you could get it to here no problem.
And the bridge of the railroad track.
But then you just have a big embankment leading into the railroad bridge, there's really nowhere to go except to maybe the cemetery.
Yeah, the railroad bridge.
There's nowhere to go on either side?
I don't.
Not much, no.
That would be, that.
Not without having somebody get.
It'd be not only dangerous, but not very pleasant. So, at, you know, at ninety, they're gonna get the roundabout, which is gonna have pet crossing. Um, it is gonna have a pet crossing from north or south to north, north to south at that roundabout at ninety and Independence.
I think we, well, we have put it on the south side to accommodate.
Pedestrian.
Oh, pedestrian.
Yeah, they pick up all the businesses going out of town.
Well, I guess, I just thought it's.
It's an interesting conversation, I don't, I don't know the answer, we talked about it and then we said, well.
I, I would leave it in.
You take it or leave it? I don't know.
You know, it just, I would.
You know, the one thing it does show is the desire to connect over there. Yeah, I just, I thought along. Maybe we make it up. On the edge of the wetland, and even if you have to get an easement from the boat, uh, storage place, or maybe a little bit of, of, uh, boardwalk to get around him. It's a lot, heck, a lot less boardwalk than going straight through the middle of it, and, um, probably more pleasant route too than the wetland.
Just have to find a big donor that.
Well, it'd be much cheaper.
Total labs like Swak.
It'd be much cheaper if we didn't have to have all that boardwalk, it'd be more feasible then, I mean, it. Is T Morris still around? This is Independence now, uh, maybe, uh. We don't have any regional facilities, uh, well, yeah, we do, we have Rebecca, so, I shouldn't say that. Yeah, I don't know, okay.
We're almost, almost.
Well, maybe, maybe, uh, we're in such a way that allows some flexibility in terms of where it is that, you know. May, and, and maybe you take this green line and instead of showing it as a, the Pioneer Creek Boardwalk, we call it the Pioneer Creek Boardwalk slash Trail Search Corridor. Or something. Something that gives you some options.
Give it a longer name.
Right, but I mean, I think to your point, it's a good point.
Give it an acronym.
Yeah.
Let's see, four dash nine and ten and four dash eleven, twelve, thirteen. On four dash fourteen, under Parks, Trails, and Open Space Goals and Policies, you've probably already done this, I think number four can be removed.
We changed it.
Yes, yes.
Okay, excellent.
And it's fixed.
Um, we've got that on four or five dash one.
Yep.
It says, um, in that first paragraph, it references the figure to five dash one, I don't know where that went.
Which one, five one?
Five dash one.
Dan, you getting that?
Where am I now, Dan?
Well, we're on.
Water conservation.
Well, the water conservation plan, I, um, you know, I can't, I haven't, that was what we submitted to the prior rate.
Right, right. But we're on that chapter right now.
Okay.
And then on five dash two, ultimate design water system, and that first paragraph, it's talking about, the table below does not include the current new water treatment facility completed in twen- two thousand eight, why not?
Um, I would have, you know, I'd have to ask Jason Board.
And, and the only reason I'm asking is if, ten years ago, and we should be able to find the words to put in here.
What is five?
Well, that's, that's gotta be, either updated or it's.
And, and it also, it makes us look good.
Yep, no, that's.
Is that not what this is all about?
Yeah, of course.
Sorry, isn't it?
You think that's the right text?
It is. Oh.
Especially with the Met Council.
This must be the whole.
Yeah.
But I don't have too many nice things to say about them. A few good people work there. I'm sorry. Too much knocking up pants against stupid.
So maybe we just pull that out, yeah.
So this.
All right, let's, we're gonna skip five.
Yeah, we may pull five out. Dan's saying that in the new guide, we don't, so we have a water conservation plan.
Okay, yeah.
That is required to be submitted, but in the Met Council requirements, we can attach it as an appendix and not as a chapter.
Oh. So, let's, um, any comments on chapter five?
Okay.
But let us look at that, 'cause maybe we'll pull this out completely, or maybe we'll just reference.
Well, again, just keep in, keep in mind that, you know, every time you can make yourself look good.
Yeah.
That's, that's a plus. Okay, we're, let's see, there are some empty pages, um.
Could I back up?
Go ahead.
I'm sorry, you're speeding so it's faster.
I'm sorry, I talk fast.
No, I, so at least I haven't had a chance to review and catch things, I'd like to bring them up.
Go ahead.
Um, back on four fourteen, on Parks, Trails, Open Space Goals and Policies, um, number four is considered replacement of the real...
That's gonna be gone.
That's gonna be gone, okay.
Yeah, they just said that.
So here's the, here's the updated one.
We said in the previous pages, I just wanna make sure it was caught here as well, too.
Yeah, I just, yeah, they just...
My updated version did not make this packet, so...
So that's, that's four now, is...
I changed three, if you can see that as well, but, um, to kind of make it more...
Yeah.
Yeah. Thoroughfare, I like that.
The, the other one is the connect Baker Park and, and the Baker Park campground to the future north-south sidewalk trail system, that has access to the loose line state trail, um, and that's, that was on, I think I saw it on the graphic as well.
Yeah, I needed to figure out how to reword this, I wanted to talk more, I said something about working with the Three Rivers Park District on development of Baker Carver Trail.
I know that, I remember when that concept first was being kind of talked about, developed, uh, for the trail on the, on the west side, was kind of in conjunction with redevelopment of that area, uh, it was to be, uh, you know, a more of a higher density, you know, townhomes, apartments, whatever, if the whole area gets redeveloped as the old, uh, comp plan had guided, then that would be the opportunity to do that, but if that's not gonna happen, if we're gonna leave it a single family, do we, do we still want considered trail on that side?
Um, I don't think we do.
I, I'm not sure it's really necessary, and I doubt, I mean, I'm not, I'm not saying, but I doubt if the park district would be interested in that either, since there's already essentially a parallel trail on, you know, on the park side.
Yeah.
Yeah, and that trail only serves then those residences right there in reality, because, I mean...
Yeah, it was also thought of to be kind of a more, a quicker way, or a more convenient way to get into sort of the recreation area of Park.
Yes.
But you're gonna go in where, you're gonna go in Main Street.
Yeah.
And that's where our residents are gonna go in, and then if there's residents that are in on the north side, they, they wanna go in and cross at the ninety-degree bend.
Maybe there could be some improvements.
There's nowhere to go there, so...
Maybe some improvements could be made along Baker Park Road or nineteen, uh, on the shoulder, to get those residents
Yeah.
to the north, back down to the regional trail to get into the park and...
Yeah.
Yeah, without, and part of that was also looking at lowering, um, the speed limit.
On that, on County Road and nineteen, yeah.
On that, right, so for people who are on bikes or...
So do we show, um...
I think I saw a blue line on the graphic.
Yep.
That?
Yep.
We do, what do you guys think about that? So this line right here?
I think that what...
This line from the crossing?
Oh, it's painted bicycle and pedestrian shoulder, it's only a shoulder.
Do we adjust that in that...
I think that's when we had normal, like, family, I believe.
You think you can?
Yeah, and without a trail, we can kind of go, could be built in, that'd be awesome.
But you could still, you could still do something to Stefan's point, for people coming, even, uh, eighteen, I have twenty-nine coming down.
Damn, damn, Mark. Come on, Mark, you didn't even put my section in the plan.
Be safer for them, they don't need to be, and, and included coming down, so we...
On that bend, yeah.
It's really, although it really only benefits...
I think I should use this part to be red.
It's red.
So close to the true.
Right here.
North of Drake Street.
All the way up.
Not all the way, it's just a year.
True.
Yeah.
Everyone...
The rest of us take the Independence, right?
Yeah, we'll take, like, Perkins down Independence and get in, or, um, I presume that, that would remain open there, but, I don't know, I'm not opposed to taking, moving it entirely, what do the others, others think?
I... I think...
We're talking about...
Thank you.
We're talking about that Baker Park, the blue line underneath Baker Park Road there.
They're probably... Yeah, Baker Park probably wouldn't spend the money, Medina's not gonna spend the money.
No, it's like, it's red to the south and then blue.
And we probably wouldn't either.
Well, I guess it...
We showed us a shoulder, painted shoulder.
At least it isn't a trail or a sidewalk.
Okay.
Yeah.
We have...
Four hundred and seventeen mark here.
I guess it doesn't hurt to leave it in, if, if the shoulder...
We have it red from the corner to here.
Well, that's trail, yeah, okay.
So we have it red, 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 blue.
Okay.
We can make this part...
So that would give people that...
We can make this part red.
Yeah, I actually think you should make that part red, to connect Independence, and then that gets all of our residents an option.
Up to Independence? Yeah. Because everybody else could go down here.
Yeah, right, it gives you an op.
The only people, yeah, that, that's a good idea, the only people that wouldn't serve is people north of Independence, that, that front on to Baker Park Road.
But they could come down the shoulder to Drake and then over, yeah, you're not talking about a lot, though, and I think, you know, anybody who's, anybody who's on inde- in, on, uh, you know, what do we have?
Interiors, yeah.
Yeah, one, two, three, four, five houses? I don't know, that's an expensive trail, even painted shoulder.
So, I mean, you could revise it, make sure it goes through at all of Independence.
And then take the blue off.
And then take the blue off, does that sound better?
I like that.
Let's do that, okay.
We'll do that.
Okay, so we have that, um, let's see, going into six dash one.
Oh, that's me now.
Yeah.
This is a section we do want.
Okay, and, and, um...
Can we just take this whole thing out?
I have, this is two, two things, um, six one, um, just out of curiosity, right at the end down here, Met Council has proposed an interceptor improvement project to rehabilitate, it's scheduled for the twenty-eleven to twenty-twenty time period, they've got two years, how, how, how like this is?